And we will have the full hour for starting five minutes late.
Yes.
So Steve, you'll have the full.
We'll have the full.
But don't look at the six thirty time, we'll go five minutes.
Okay.
Whenever we get started.
All right.
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Joan, could you do the roll call, please?
Director Hockert.
Here.
Director Kelsenberg.
Director Petrie.
Here.
Director Porbenny.
Here.
Director Riley.
Here.
Director Fatava.
Here.
Chair Sherman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Director Petrie, in a second, in a second. Okay, Director Hockert. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, tonight, we are here for second round interviews with our finalists. Thank you very much, welcome back. Thank you for coming in to speak to us. Tonight is similar format to the first time you were here. We're going to kind of take turns asking some questions. Give you time to answer them each, and we will have a timekeeper, assuming again, with the lovely flashcards, so you keep on schedule, and we may, if you don't see them, we'll kind of let you know. And then at the end, you'll have time to ask us any remaining questions that you have. Great.
Sounds good.
Okay. So let's really quickly, I guess, go around and introduce ourselves just really quick, one last time. I'm Allison Sherman, I'm the board chair.
Katie Hockert, vice chair.
Vivian Vodova, director.
Tina Riley, director.
Pete Kelsenberg, director.
Annie Porbenny, clerk.
Bev Petrie, treasurer.
Great.
Very good.
Okay. So first question, since your first interview, is there anything you have thought of that you wish you had told us about yourself? In addition, is there anything you spoke to in your first interview but wish to elaborate on further?
Great, thank you. First of all, thank you for having me back. It's good to be back and good to see everyone again. And thank you for the opportunity to visit schools today. Thoroughly enjoyed my afternoon, could have gone on to more, despite the weather. It was great, really. I appreciated being able to spend time, high school, middle school, on the elementary level, and see a little bit of the breadth of the district. The banner over there says eight thousand reasons why, and I got to see, I won't lose count, but several of those reasons today. And a chance to visit with students and staff, and I really appreciated that. That's what it's all about. And so, thank you for that opportunity. Since my first interview, things that I've thought of, you know, I felt good about the first interview, and I felt I had a chance to kind of talk about my skills, my experiences, and hopefully relay a sense of who I am as an educator and as a leader. Things to elaborate on, a couple of things maybe to highlight. I think I talked about in my first interview that in my current district, it's very unique for a large metro district because it does not have associate or assistant superintendents. We have a team of directors, and we all have responsibility and could step in at any time for the office of the superintendent, if you will, and we take pride in that, but it's a very horizontal, lateral structure. But from that structure becomes a lot of collaboration, and that fits my style as well. I really view myself as a collaborative leader, and I think people you talk to that worked with me, alongside me, or there were superintendents that I worked under, or people in my department would talk about my collaborative principles, they would talk about my collaborative style of leadership. And so I really wanted to emphasize that. One other piece to emphasize, I guess, linking to my current experience, I work in a large district in the metro area, has a lot of suburban communities and also township communities, so there's a, there's, and cities, so there's a variety there. I know from the, maybe from the outside, fourth largest district in the state where I work right now, and Stillwater is a medium-sized district. That appeals to me, though. I think there's opportunities that come with a large scale, but there's challenges that come with a large scale. And part of that is being responsive and being nimble with change, and also the sense of community. I take pride in developing a sense of community. I did that when I was a principal, and I really took pride in the culture of the school, and really took pride in the feedback I got about that. And have done my part in a larger district to kind of contribute and create that culture as a leader as well. But I also would look forward to a medium-sized district that has a lot of the same qualities, that has a variety of suburban and communities, township communities, and a wide geographic area, but also that has that medium-sized, the one high school, and, you know, that we're all, we're all in this together in the same learning community, if you will, that appeals to me. So I look at it as similar to where I come from, but advantages of a medium-sized district, that's the way I look at it. So I wanted to emphasize that as well. And I think one, maybe one last thing I would add, that I hope came through in the first interview, but I want to take another opportunity to just really talk about my passion for the work. I always view myself as an educator first and a leader second, okay? And the two intersect in a variety of roles, it'd be teacher leaders, principals, and, you know, district office staff leaders and the superintendent. But I pride myself on being an educator first and a leader second. And I think that helps ground a superintendent into being a student-centered leader, and being grounded in the mission of why we're here, and being clear about that. And so I just want to make sure that my passion for the work and that sense of being an educator and educated leader comes through.
Great. Thank you.
All right, welcome back. Next question. We believe building effective leadership teams is a critical, is critical to student success. As you look at Stillwater area schools, what specific competency and leadership traits would you look for in administrative colleagues on your team and why? And if you were to feel some realignment were necessary, please provide specific examples of how you would go about making a change.
Competencies and leadership traits and administrative team, and administrative colleagues. I would not desire to have a team where everyone had the same strengths or skillsets that I do. And I think, I think administrative leadership team, everyone brings something to the table, okay? And so I think, I think ideally you're looking for strong skillsets, strong personal qualities as people, leaders and educators, or in operation leaders, but you're looking for a variety and skillset. You want to complement one another. So in terms of traits, first of all, a variety of skillsets, I don't want clones on the leadership team. Everyone's unique and everyone brings something to the table. In terms of competency, regardless of the leadership role, whether it be a principal, whether it be part of a district-level leadership team, there, there is a competency unique to each role. There's a skillset experience or qualities, whether it be finance or operations or in a building leader, that skillset and experience you're looking for, that background, but beyond that, you're looking for qualities as people. You're looking for integrity. You're looking for communication skills, collaboration. People that really, that really can kind of live the mission, if you will, to be very clear that regardless of what your role is, if you're in operations, you're student-centered. Every part of the organization should be connected and centered on that, okay? Being a student-centered organization, so looking for people that have those personal qualities of integrity and positivity and good communication skills, but, but also that, that sense of mission and sense of commitment to the larger whole, commitment to the team, commitment to the work, commitment to one another. In terms of realignment, if I found something where necessary with realignment, how would I go about making a change? Well, first of all, I would, I would want to really make sure that that was grounded in understanding, understanding of needs of the district, understanding of the people on the leadership team and their roles, and the, I've looked at the organizational chart, for instance, of the district leadership team. Every district's a little bit different, but there's also similarities. Well, there's a why behind that historically, or for whatever reason, there's a why behind that. And so I would want to live that experience, live with that team, and get to know those people and understand the historical context and the needs of the district, and then, and then I think you get to a point where you're saying, we have a need here, okay? Example I can give in our own district, we actually have two attorneys on staff, okay? I remember in, and one of them's a part of the superintendent's cabinet, but I remember early in my career in that district, when we first hired an attorney into a district leadership role, instead of contracting out for legal counsel, and that was a big deal. And then in the last, I would say, four years, because of the scope of the work, okay, an assistant district attorney was added to our school district. But again, that was based on need, right? And there was a historical context for that, rationale for that. When that structure was changed, I know the district leadership looked at both the need workload and also looked at the financial aspect of it, of scenario A versus scenario B, but that was, that was a change. Another example I could give, our district has always had a director of communications. Historically, though, both the director of communications and the community ed director were at a different, even though they're on the cabinet, they're at a different level. Well, the scope of our community education program grew over time, and the scope and profile of the communications office in our district grew over time. And so then there was a made, there was a change made in the level of both of those positions, okay? Again, rounded out that lateral, I'll say, superintendent's cabinet team. So I think, going back to Stillwater, I think I would want to live, learn and live and understand the district and the needs of the district, and, and also learn and live with that leadership team, okay, before making any kind of, I guess, recommendations. In terms of how I go about making a change, if I, if there was a demonstrated need, I would want to share that with the board, my perspective and rationale for that, whether it be alignment, or whether it be an add, or a change. I'd really like to partner with the board and share that rationale and partner in that thinking, but have a clear rationale and always be centered on the why, I think it's important. And anytime you're making a change, whether it be in a, in a, in a leadership team, or an administrative team, or somewhere else in the district, you have to have a strong why, okay? You have to be able to hang your hat on, this is why, okay? Here's our rationale, here's the benefits. It doesn't mean everyone will agree with that, change, but if you have a clear why and can show that you weigh the pros and cons, look to the benefits, I think that's essential.
Thank you.
Our district is becoming increasingly diverse in age, religion, education, ethnicity, race, socioeconomics, and political views. What would you do to help unite a district that has such a breadth of views and experiences? Please be specific.
I think it's a challenge for all school districts right now, across the country, across Minnesota and in the metro area as well. We are finding ourselves, for a number of reasons, in a divisive time, across a range of social issues, politically, amidst the pandemic, and I think that it's become very, very divisive, and I think social media amplifies that as well. I think people are listening to re, listening to reply rather than listening to understand. And I think that's a huge challenge. People have their view set, their mind made up, and when they're listening, they're already thinking about what they are going to say, rather than truly understanding where the other person or people are coming from. I think that's, that's, it's a big root of the, I guess, problem that we're encountering. I also think that school districts and school district leadership, including the school board, in some cases across the country, has gotten really politicized, and I think that's unfortunate. I think school district leaders, including the board, or namely the board, historically in this country, local control is huge, but it's been a nonpartisan, nonpartisan. Not that, not that everyone doesn't have their own beliefs, okay, their own background, their own views, but it's been nonpartisan, looking at public education, what's in the best interests of students, and how can we work together? So I think that's unfortunate that in, across the country, it's become partisan in some ways. And I think the Stillwater area learning community and elsewhere across the metro area in Minnesota, too, is changing over time, changing demographics. That's not a bad thing. There are assets and strengths and wonderful uniqueness that everyone brings to the table, and that should be celebrated, and the mission of public schools really is for everyone in that learning community, period, each and every student. So in terms of, in terms of what I would do to help unite a district that has a breadth of views, experiences, division, what have you, first of all is to be that, that verbal and visual and symbolic voice of saying, you know, what are our common interests? Okay, what are, what are the best interests of students? Okay? To be, to be, to really get people to focus on what is our common ground, okay? To model that listening for understanding, to create venues for that, but also to model that as a leader, whether I'm individually talking to a community member, or parent, or family, or staff member, or whether I'm in a structured board setting, or a community listening session, or what have you, is to model that. Most recently, I led a tenancyary adjustment process in our district, which was affected all of our high schools, all four of our high schools, and affected five out of our six middle schools, and, and in the culmination of the, of the phasing process, there'll be over eight hundred students impacted by that. And we had a number of listening sessions that were separate from the formal board, traditional board meetings, and I really prided myself in those sessions, both when I was presenting and then listening afterwards, and in the open listening sessions, to truly listen to understand, to dignify people's views, to questions, and, and feelings. We did make some changes and adjustments to our plan based on that input, both through a survey input and also in listening sessions. One of my favorite moments, I was walking out of one of our middle schools after a presentation and a listening session, and there was a, a young mother in our district very involved, who had been at two presentation sessions and two listening sessions, and she stayed late, and my colleague and I stayed and talked to her, listened to her, and got to know her fairly well, and she walked out and she said to both my colleague and I, she says, I really, really appreciate your time. I don't agree with this decision, but I understand your why, and she said, and I really, really like and appreciate the way that you listened and handled. And she said, it's hard for me, and then she made it, she kind of laughed, and she said, you know, after these four times, she said, it's hard for me to not, not walk away but with a smile, even though I disagree, she said, because I really like you. And I, and I don't say that in a conceded kind of way, but it was an investment in the relationship that she knew who I was, was, what I stood for, the fact that I listened, and I really tried to understand where she was coming from, we dialogued about it, and even though she didn't agree with the end goal and how it affected her youngest child, okay, in that process ultimately, she, she appreciated how we went about the work. And I think that is just one example, that was with one parent, but I think that's an investment in, that speaks to this of specifically example, how could I play a role in bridging that, bridging that divide, regardless of the issue? And that was a tenancyary adjustments, which can be controversial, but with any, with any, I guess divisive issue, is for, my hope would be that I build relationships in the district, that I'm accessible, approachable, visible, and, and when they're dialogue, when, when people are dialoguing, stakeholders are dialoguing with me, they know that I listen to understand. Doesn't mean ultimately will agree with a recommendation I made or decision I made, or how I interpreted something, but they'll know that I understand where they're coming from, and dignifying their view and pointing to common ground. I think the last thing I will mention, too, I think there's a, goes a long way if a person models and expects civil discourse. And sometimes things are out of, out of a person's control, because you can't control how others act, but I think modeling and doing what you can to expect civil discourse goes a long way. Not everyone is going to agree on, on every issue, and, but we can agree of how we work together, how we treat one another, and we can model that to one another, both in a group setting or a one-on-one setting, so that, that's what I would bring to the table for that.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven. How do you go about developing a budget? When resources are at a minimum, how do you go about prioritizing funding and, if necessary, cut the budget? Again, be specific, and then explain how you help inform district stakeholders regarding school finances.
Very good. Well, my current role, I'm responsible for a budget of over thirty million dollars for our, our department in our district, and a, and a three million dollar capital budget in, in our district for, for teaching and learning. I'm also at the table, again, with my team, team of directors and the superintendent in, in all of our budget decisions, conversations, and, and dialogue with the board. I've lived through, as a district director, significant budget adjustments. The worst was three years in a row where we had substantial budget cuts, one on top of the other, for three years in a row. We had a, a district-wide committee, if you will, that worked through and came up with scenarios of, and, and quantified almost every aspect of the operation in the district, and we ended up with this huge spreadsheet, and we came up with options A, B, and C, but it was all focused on priorities, and they were tough decisions, okay? So we had our priorities, and then we had okay, and the board had to make a decision if they wanted A, B, or C, and there was a different depth, I guess, or scale to A, B, and C, just how, how deep it went, right? And we did that three years in a row, and I was, I was involved every step of the way in that process, but, so I'll go kind of circular here. So I'm going to go back to developing a budget. I think developing a budget is a, a mix of a few things, priorities, there's a mix of historical precedence, because you have an existing system. The majority of school district budget is staff. You've got existing programming staff that is there right now, or has been there for a while, okay, and is tied to students and tied to expectations, so there's a, there's a precedence, there's an existing structure. And there's the prior, priorities as you look for the year ahead and into the future, the priorities, and then it's that, the third piece is the resources, okay? What is that funding stream tied to enrollment, tied to state allocations, which is out of our control, right? And we try to project, and I think a lot of people struggle, on the outside of schools, struggle to understand that, that it's a moving target, and it's an unknown target, and we're constantly recalibrating. We can have a five-year budget plan, great, but in two years, we don't know what that state contribution is going to be, what that formula is going to be. Obviously, there's a mixture of, of local levy, but the majority coming from the state, and that being unpredictable. So it's resources, okay? And I would also add, maybe the fourth thing that's going to come into play for budgeting the school district is, is inflation. Inflation at a four-year high for every sector of the economy, that's going to affect school districts, transportation being one of them. And so there are some things that maybe for the last ten years have been fairly, I'll say fixed, or fairly known inflation, and like everything else in our lives right now, that's going to hit school districts, okay? So there's an unknown with state funding, okay? That's hard to predict. We do our best to have that prediction and have that five-year budget plan that we update each year. Resources, inflation being an impact, historical existing structures, priorities, short-term, long-term, all that comes together in my mind. And then obviously, in the district, there's budget centers by school and by program and so forth, where people, it's a, it's a collaborative effort, once that centralized parameters are set, there's responsibilities throughout the district to, to create a budget and manage it within, within each budget center. I spoke a little bit to prioritizing, prioritizing funding and cutting the budget. I've lived that in the department and on a district scale. I've led community meetings where our, here's an example, we have a large achievement integration budget in our district, my current district, it funds magnet schools and a variety of programs. The board made a decision to add two magnet schools to the district, but there was no increase in achievement and integration funding from the state, so we had to support programming and transportation to those two magnet schools without an additional funding stream. And the charge was to do that with our existing achievement integration funding stream. So I led a series of stakeholder and community meetings, saying, here's the, here's the, here's the pot of money, here's the amount that's going to be allocated to the two new schools to grow that magnet program, and here's the other programs, staffing positions that were tied to it and so forth, and we, our target is we need to reduce that part of the budget by X amount to support this, okay? Not something I wanted to do, okay? But stakeholders from all those program areas and, and people that were funded by that, I led, you know, listening sessions around that and got input, and was really clear on the why, and then was able to put together a plan, looking at priorities, but also trying to look at, trying to have the least disruptive result to the affected programs. And so again, I think with that, people understood the why, they understood the rationale, they understood the thoughtful approach, and they knew that in the end, there was going to be a shift or reduction to compensate for adding programming. So I've, I've been, I've led that process. It came to recommendations for the superintendent and the board in that, in that process. And the last piece, be specific, in terms of explaining how I would help inform district stakeholders regarding school finances, I think part of it as superintendent is that you're informing stakeholders along the way, whether it be a board presentation, whether it be an annual report on the budget with, you know, the finance director and the superintendent, but I think it's important to have a, an annual means to communicate to the community, whether it be through a newsletter, whether it be through a board meeting, or both, to, to communicate where things are at, and, and so there's no surprises, even though that, that state funding is unpredictable at times, and there's other pressures now coming like inflation, I think it's to, to, it's a, it's a, it's a dynamic, ongoing conversation, just like a school board doesn't want surprises, I don't believe the community wants surprises. So if we're, if we can show the community that this is where, you know, the money went, so what we spent money on, here's where the budget is at, and here's some things on the horizon that, you know, that affect our, our planning moving forward, but that's done on an ongoing basis, at least an annual basis, and a variety of methods to communicate that. So if things got to a point of saying, we're looking at budget adjustments, or we're looking at a bond referendum, or a levy referendum, there's not a surprise, because at a bond referendum or a levy referendum, there's not a surprise because there's been communication along the way. Obviously, when you get to the referendum kind of piece, there's a lot of work that goes into that with stakeholder committees and so forth and extra layers of communication at that point in time. But really, it's built on that, I guess, tell the story. I think a superintendent gets, has a responsibility, gets the opportunity to tell the story of the district in a variety of ways. Part of that story is fiscally, okay, where are we at? Where have we been? Where are we going? What's on the horizon? That's part of, part of that. But it's a, telling a story, so again, it's, it's not a surprise to the community. The community's kind of in sync and there's a rhythm to that a little bit, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, thirty minutes?
Actually, a little bit more than thirty minutes, but I didn't want to interrupt your answer, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Number eight. Many students are suffering from stress, mental health and behavioral, behavioral issues. These are just a few barriers they face to reaching their full potential. Give us distinct examples of how you would implement a support system for staff, parents, and students to reduce these and other barriers hindering their full academic and social, emotional growth.
Priority factors I think have led or lead to that reality. I think the one that stands out the most, that's been talked about the most is the effect of the pandemic. Not that there weren't needs before the pandemic, but I think the need for mental health support has been, is amplified because of the pandemic and the, and the layers of stressors for students, families, and staff. And, and I'll also add to that, that in the pandemic, there were some segments of society, some, some, I'll say maybe marginalized populations that maybe were, felt that stress of the pandemic even more, whether it be socioeconomic situations, the stress of, stress of, of job situations, what have you, health, physical health. I think student and staff well-being is paramount. I think it's, it's actually, we talk about the mission of the school district, there's so much focus and rightly so on academic achievement and preparing students for that, that next step with a career or, or world of work or college readiness. But student and staff well-being is parent, is really, is, is, is paramount, is right, is right there, okay, with that academic or preparation. It has to be. Now, some people say that you, you have to address Maslow before you can address Bloom and that Maslow being the basic needs, okay, of safety and well-being and, you know, physical and emotional and socially. And then you get to Bloom, which is those levels of, of deeper learning. And, and I think that's true. You, if students are suffering from stress, mental health, if the dysregulation behavior of students is affecting other students in the classroom, that is going to interfere with the goal of learning, okay, that deeper learning academically. So it's a priority in schools, it's vital in schools. As the question says, it creates barriers to reaching their full potential, absolutely, absolutely. So distinct examples of how I'd implement a support system for staff, parents, and students. First of all, I'll, I'll guess amplify some of the things I heard today and hearing the principals talk about BAR, okay, and conscious discipline and responsive classroom and the web program and the link program, okay? All of those efforts, okay, address that social, emotional foundation of learning. Mental health services available in the schools, whether it's provided through district staff or subcontracted out to providers in a joint partnership. I think both of those are critical. I know I heard students today talk about the wellness center at Stillwater High School and access to that. And things that have changed, if you look back ten years ago into our schools and you may not, you might have seen a counselor or a social worker depending upon the school or level, but today, even before the pandemic, you saw an increase of different types of support or increased support, whether it be counselors, social workers, mental health providers subcontracted out or a part of, of the school staff themselves. I think that's huge. When I was over at Lakewood Elmo Elementary, they were talking about the, I think they called it the green room, but the place where students were able to regulate a little bit. And they were talking about how their, the office referrals went down to like something from six hundred down to like a hundred and some. And because students had a place, some students, it needed, maybe not all students accessed it, but students had a place to go and get regulated before it got to a place where it caused severe disruptions and then resulted in an office referral and that kind of thing. Those are all examples, I think, of how a, how schools and a system can address behavioral issues, mental health, and stress. I think as a, as a superintendent, you don't do it yourself, you work with your, your team of leaders in the district to say, how are we doing? How might we? How can we? Look outside the district, what are others doing? Because guarantee you that, that every district across the metro area, okay, is, is challenged by that same piece. Coming out of the pandemic, the, in that first fall back, the, into full, what I'll call traditional in-person learning, there was a lot of dysregulation. Students that, you know, third graders that their last experience in school was kindergarten or seniors, their last full quote-unquote normal year was when they were freshmen, let's say, okay? And, and I heard and saw several examples of that. And so it was an all hands on deck. It was a draining, has been a draining year for staff because I think it was just, it took an extra level of energy on the part of staff to, to intervene and provide support. So I think as a superintendent acknowledging that, and if we ever were in that situation again, it's what can we take off of people's plates? How can we pause certain things because this is a priority right now? But then also looking forward, this is kind of the new reality right now. I think that the, the level of, new reality is the, the awareness and, and level of need and the priority to focus on student and staff well-being. Michael Follin, one of the leading educational researchers and thought leaders, came up with a book very recently and it's all centered on well-being, student-staff well-being and collaboration. And he's basically saying, moving forward, school systems, education, okay, is going to be centered on how are we working together, collaborating in teams and how are we developing a sense of community in our, in our team, in our school, in our district? How are schools, school to school, collaborating and working together? Because we can't do it alone. How are principals collaborating, working together? And how are we centering our work, acknowledging that the need for student-staff well-being? And he talks about deeper learning, he talks about, what I'll say, the six Cs, which are very similar to elements in the portrait of a graduate. So he talks about, that should be our focus, not on standardized tests. And he says that as a place, however, the real focus is here. But he says that if we are focusing on those things and we're not addressing student-staff well-being, we're missing the mark. So it's kind of centering the organization on collaborating, student-staff well-being, that portrait of a graduate, those six Cs. And yes, that foundation, literacy and math sometime, you know, measured by standardized tests is, is, is important and we track that, especially at the elementary level. But this is our focus and student-staff well-being is like a pillar in that and it's part of our, part of our new mission, if you will. Thank you.
All right. So my question is in two parts. So the first part is, what trends do you see happening in career, technical, and special education? Describe for us how you stay current on these trends and specifically how you would explore what lies ahead in the future for career, technical, and special ed programs?
It is a, probably more than a two-part question. Thank you. So trends I see happening in career and technical education and special education. Those are two, they can be related, obviously, but also two distinct program areas as well. So trends in career and technical, you know, it's been interesting. So the career and technical education, I'll say in my current district is under my umbrella is teaching and learning. And it's been interesting locally and then also on a broader scale, seeing the pendulum swing a little bit back and forth over the years. At one point, there was a huge focus on college readiness. Everything was ACT, college readiness, college readiness, college readiness, okay? And college and career readiness, okay? And then I would say recently, there's been emphasis, a renewed emphasis on the trades. And so we were always tracking, I guess, within our district, when we look at our career and, and technical education of trying to look at what, you know, what's the marketplace? What are the, where, where, what's the direction of, of, of the world of work, if you will? But for a while, there was a little, a little bit of a shift away from the trades and that's come back, come back pretty swiftly, pretty pronounced, demand for the trades and the, and the high demand for high-paying trades positions that after apprenticeship and let's say a two-year degree or what have you, or something similar or a combination of those two, that are very attractive in a variety, a variety of positions, whether it be welding or whether it be another aspect. So it's been interesting to watch that, I guess, pendulum of the language, maybe? You know, if you looked at the snapshot of the language ten years ago in career and technical ed or in education in general, and what's the language two years ago and what's the language now? That's been interesting to kind of watch that. And again, from college readiness to career and college readiness to just preparing students for life after, after high school. So that's been interesting to track. So, so trends, I guess, to speak to in career and technical ed, I think that shift towards the trades, also the obvious shift the last decade with STEM careers and also with technology and a variety of avenues. I think that's, that's been a shift in the last decade as well in terms of a trend, which I think plays out into the future too with the field of digital marketing and so forth. My, my, my son is, is, it's hard to even describe, but his, his, his job now, coming out of graduate school in his twenties, is a, is a targeted digital marketing and the what they're able to, how they're able to use data to target marketing is, is incredible. And so I think the whole world of technology and, and using data in a variety of ways is a trend as well. I could go on about that. But, so in terms of special education, trends I see in special education, looking over the last decade, inclusion is huge. And, and so having opportun, having students have access to equitable opportunities alongside all students in the classroom or in the school, making accommodations so all students can be included. And I think there's some, some heartwarming examples too of, of, you know, a FIED class that is a regulated FIED class and let's say a center-based FIED class and watching the magic that happens between students from the adaptive FIED into a, a quote, traditional FIED class and being, the students being together and watch what happens and the life skills and the social, emotional, and the collaboration and so forth that, that is inherent in that. So I think trends of inclusion, okay, and collaboration with special education. How, how, how I stay current on those trends, you know, in addition to, to, you know, reading and networking with, with people in industry, community organizations and so forth, but really, it's, 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 it's collaborating with others in programming that, that, whether it be for a trend in the marketplace or whether it be, this is the right thing to do for students, okay? How can we best be inclusive, okay? Not just legally, but how can we best be inclusive for students? Living that, I think, is, is, is how I follow those trends and talking, visiting with people about that. Specifically, how would I explore what lies ahead in the future for career tech and special ed? I think it's, it's fostering my own professional development and that can be done through reading, can be done through dialogue. I also think it, it is collaboration with colleagues and, and, and industry leaders and, and people in the community, but I, but I think it's, it's being, looking for and being open to innovation and, and whether it be touring other districts, whether it be touring businesses, whether it be accessing professional conferences that are centered on innovation. I've never been a person that's been stagnant to say, well, this is always the way we've done, this is always the way we're going to do it. In fact, I've been, I haven't been on the bleeding edge of change because I think that has hazards, but I've always had a forward lean to say, how might we? What is out there? How can we position ourselves? Because the, the world of work that our students and the careers our students are preparing themselves for, there's that old adage that, you know, some of those haven't even been invented yet. And today, that's even more true, okay? What my son is involved with with digital marketing, when he was in ninth grade, that didn't exist, the specific aspect that he's involved in right now. So I think I come back to that portrait of a graduate, how those skills for our students are vital because we're preparing them with that skill set because we don't know specifically what we're preparing them for. I also think that we have to be forward-thinking. I think about the pathways at Stillwater High School and the forethought of going into that and exposing, having students being exposed and elect to pursue certain pathways. I think it, it prepares them in a, in a direction, if you will, and, and an awareness. Some of those things that they pursue in, in healthcare might not exist right now, but we're laying that foundation and we're creating that inspiration. So I think being open to and trying to foster some things that already exist in the district, being aware of, trying to look over the horizon a little bit to say, what is out there and how might we? That'd be my approach.
Thank you. Describe your experience in working with employee unions and collective bargaining, including the negotiations process. Please be as specific as possible and I'll just note that you have fifteen minutes left in case you didn't see that card.
Thank you, okay. And the last time I, I went fast at the beginning and I slowed down in my last interview and then I came right down the wire, so I'm trying to time here just right. Experience of working with employee unions and collective bargaining, for the last few years, I would say extensive experience. I was a part of the, I was a leader and a part of the leadership team on the negotiations this past summer for our latest two-year contract with the teachers' union. We have interest-based bargaining in my current district and it's an investment of time and that, that amount of time for that has grown over the last decade. And I don't know how I count the number of hours this past summer, but I think it was twenty sessions that we had that was on top of everyone's regular duties, whether they were a teacher, teacher bargaining group or the district's bargaining group. But it was really, it was a true investment. I was, so I was involved, we had board members as part of our committee and building leaders and district leaders and our director of HR facilitating that. And so I was at that, involved in that process from every meeting all the way through and a part of that leadership team. So heavily involved in collective bargaining with the teachers' union and using interest-based bargaining. We found that successful, but it is a large investment of time and, and also we found that, I would say the last two contracts, a lot of the issues brought forward, I shouldn't say a lot, a growing number of issues brought forward for conversation truly wouldn't be classified as traditionally issues to be bargained when you get right down to the teacher contract. However, we proceeded through layers of conversation and reached a mutual understanding that I think informed our work moving forward, even though it didn't result in the actual contract. But that's an investment, it's an investment in the relationship genuinely and sincerely. It's an investment in dignifying the voices at the table. And again, even if some of the issues that were discussed are not truly in the end part of a bargain settlement, they inform the work moving forward mutually. So a lot of experience with that. On a broader scale, I'm involved as our team of directors, we, we talk about We, we talk about all settlements and bargaining units and processes. Currently, our district is in mediation with our transportation, or, excuse me, our, our bus drivers' union, okay, transportation union. And so involved in, in all those conversations related to that, conversations with board members and, 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 and as a superintendent's cabinet to, you know, navigating that. Okay, so in the interest of time, I'm going to stop there and give you two specific examples, but I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Great, I'm going to take the, the last few here. If your closest colleague and your harshest critic were to share their perspectives of you, what would we hear from each?
Well, my closest colleague was a principal and I used to work with as a teacher and we've worked all the way through our careers together in a variety of roles. My closest colleague would say that I'm a leader. Would say that I bring people together, that I foster collaboration, that I'm empowering, that I care, that I'm a person of integrity and I'm a really good listener. That same person would say that I lead and I have brought forth changes that are fundamental in, in terms of instructionally, how we work as a district across the system, the collaboration amongst teams, the focus on inquiry, the focus on equity and instructional resources, our one-to-one technology framework, all of that. And he would say that, that, he would say that that's grounded in my leadership and that across a large system, that, that my approach fostered and, and resulted in that. My harshest critic, that's a challenging one because, right, you asked your, you don't ask that person to write you a letter of recommendation, right? Whereas those other qualities, they've come out of my letters of recommendation too. My harshest critic would say that they know that I care, that I listen. I think that person would say that they don't always, they don't always agree with me. But that, that I respect and dignify where they're coming from.
Thank you. Okay, so we, the board had asked one question to be submitted in writing. For the benefit of the public, I'll read that, I will read that question. As Stillwater Area Public Schools approaches the time to refresh our strategic plan, please describe your specific ideas for crafting our district's vision for the next 10 years. Describe how you might build upon and incorporate our portrait of a graduate into Stillwater's next strategic planning process. So the board did receive your response and read that and we just wanted to give you an opportunity to add anything or clarify anything that might be in there if you feel the need.
Thank you. I guess for the benefit of the community, and I was watching the one-page response, I guess to highlight that, talked about, talked about the idea that the first year as a superintendent really is a foundation, listening and learning and sharing who I am, listening and learning about the district and, and starting to see the, hear and see the themes that arise of, of where the district's at, what are some of the challenges and, and, and what are some needs moving forward. That creates a base to collaborate with the board and other stakeholders on the strategic, strategic planning process eventually. The existing strategic planning process, I wrote about that, it's very strong. I would view from my, from my perspective right now, that any kind of strategic planning process in the near future would be a, how, how do we refresh, strengthen, revitalize the current strategic plan, not create a whole new strategic plan? And part of that being that portrait of a graduate, the, the, the mission in, in the language and the mission and, and some of the parameters around that and portrait of graduate are extremely strong. And at this point in time, moving forward, if we pull together a strategic planning process, what would we add? What would we tweak? What would we strengthen to expand and extend and refresh that? I gave a couple of examples that with the, the portrait of a graduate centered on the six Cs or loosely centered on the six Cs, what Mike Form calls the six Cs. And I, there's a couple of other Cs that I think come into play at this day and age that maybe I've referenced earlier, but the sense of community and an understanding of culture. Okay, where does that play into the portrait of a graduate? Okay, and I'm just throwing those out as, as I guess what I would see as relevant ideas. But the process, you have to trust the process when you have a stakeholder group going down the road of strategic planning. There's some real practical pieces, I think, that would come forward into that I highlighted too about the vertical pathway for the immersion program, what's the future of that? I mean, there's some, there's some practical pieces in terms of addressing space needs and equitable space experiences and resources and facilities and enrollment. And then a focus on continued innovation, the one-on-one environment in light of the recent levy. I mean, I think that all those come together, but it's a refresh of the strategic plan. It's not moving in a different direction, it's coming together. Okay, centering ourselves, what needs to be refreshed as we vision forward to ground, to ground our planning and thinking. And the bottom line is to involve stakeholders in the process and communicate well. So verbally, just trying to highlight, I think, what I, what I wrote about.
Thank you for doing that. We have five minutes left and the last question is, what questions do you have for us?
Yeah.
If any.
Yeah, the last, last time I was here, I asked about the ideal board superintendent communication. I asked about what would, if you fast forward five years from now, what would make you say, wow, we, we hired the right person for this job? Okay, so I appreciate the input on that. Maybe a little bit, I have one question, maybe a little bit extension of, of one of those two. Jim Collins, who wrote the book Good to Great, talks about what he calls B-hogs, big hairy audacious goals. Okay, and Stephen Covey writes about Wigs, okay, wildly important goals. Okay, these are the ones like, this is huge, right? This is like front and center, okay? So I guess as you look ahead, five, eight or 10 years, not the next three, four years, I'm talking five, eight, 10 years, is there a wig, wildly important goal that just, or as Collins would say, a B-hog? Okay, a big hairy audacious goal for Stillwater Area Schools? Is there something that comes to mind? There's my question.
Let's just start first. No?
Let's see.
Okay, I, I'll start.
Okay.
I'll start. So I think that Stillwater has always been a district of choice in, in the East Metro. And that has been its, its legacy and, and that continues to this day. You know, I think that, you know, there's been a, there's been an impact by charter schools in this particular neck of the woods. I think that in, in five or 10 years, if we were to become the hands-down best option for schooling and, and it was recognized by all parents in this area and people are clamoring to come here. And that, you know, and we were able to increase our capture rate because of it, that would be a big hairy goal to me.
Thank you.
Director Riley?
I would say what I think would be a, 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 a big goal is nothing out of the norm. It would be to increase our academics, our academic outcomes because we do have a lot of choice in the district. And in order to grow this district, I think we need, another lofty goal of mine would be to be able to listen to all of the community so we can become united and we can grow our, our academic achievement levels, we can close the achievement gap and, and we can be a draw again and we have the potential of be the most amazing district on the East Side and I would love to see that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think, mine is a bit funny, so. I think for me, I agree with Director Riley as well as Director Petrie. I was smiling when both of them were speaking. However, when Pete, look at the, look, just look behind you. See right there, there's a reason why they're here and the interest in wanting to know who the next person will be is very important to our community. Not only that, we want a situation where Stillwater is mentioned. It's not the movie, the people know what it, what you're talking about. So when we say Stillwater, I live in Stillwater and from Stillwater, people will go, oh yeah, I know where that is, your schools are phenomenal, based on what both of them just said. Not the movie again, but that's what we're looking for. I know it's not something that can be achieved overnight, but that's the, that's the vision. So we're looking for someone that can actually take us there.
See, hearing that, that's exciting, that's inspirational. Adding together those three things, okay? That's exciting, that, that, that's motivating.
Yeah.
I, I would add, I mean, kind of a similar vein, but also there's a lot of excellence that comes out of Stillwater, but there's also some people that are still down here. So we want to keep this excellence happening, but also pull the whole works in that direction, in the forward direction.
I think one thing, oh, I was just gonna say, sorry. I was just gonna say one thing I would add to that because I don't think it can only be at this table. I think I'd like to see our big goal be the community's collective big goal. And to me, it starts with, you know, we've had a lot of superintendent turnover and I think it's really hindered every goal that has kind of been here, that has been expressed here. So I personally would love to see the person that we end up hiring here in, you know, you mentioned five, eight, 10 years. I think that stability would be good for all the people back there, for all our students and for these board members and future board members. So I think that, you know, it's just an important piece.
I think one of the things that Pete said, there's, we have this really strong academic group, kind of, and then we have a lot of people who fall through the cracks and they're not maybe encouraged to be the best they can be. And they're, it's kind of just accepted that, well, they're fine, you know? And I think that needs to change. I think it's a community thing too, like the community has to want that to change, but also the schools themselves has to see every kid as being capable of doing better, of learning better, of being creative and not just push the, you know, the, the top kids so much and not as much the other kids.
Being that district of choice and excellence for all students, not just for a segment.
I'd like to add just one more thing. I echo what all of my fellow board members are speaking about. Just one note on our community. We have a very proud community with lots of very dedicated individuals who really want to contribute to our district and want to have their voices heard. And from my experience, sometimes it's kind of a, almost a cacophony of voices. And what we really need is someone who can bring all of those good intentions and good ideas together in one strategic way and really funnel that energy into making our district stronger instead of just a lot of noise.
Thank you. I'm at my time.
Yeah. Thank you so much for, for coming out.
Yeah, I did, I did want to walk around and, and thank you individually. And also I brought forward a draft of entry plan as superintendent for Stillwater Area Schools. And I also took the liberty to attach on the back end, a couple additional letters of reference in the search process. We were, I was joking with Barb about this, but we were allowed to submit three. I had 10, I'm like, how do I choose three? And I chose three. And, but I'm taking liberty to hand out the entry plan and just a couple of other letters, which I think hopefully hear other people's voice, round out what I've tried to communicate. So.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Barb? Are we supposed to, are we supposed to type in his name here or is that? Are we supposed to just type in the name here?
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Oh, oh. Okay, got it.
Like the radio button?
Mm-hmm. Got it, okay, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you for coming down, Steve. Thank you.
I gotta get on the email thing, enter all that stuff. Um, I didn't look at it. Does, is it different than?
Remind myself as I say that, yeah.
She's, yeah, yeah, that, I didn't, I didn't open it.
And then at the end, once we've all submitted all four, they'll tabulate as instantly as you can't see them.
Nice, nice.
Very good.
You have to be a self-starter. And then I think that the last component, and again, this is something you can learn, is, you know, do they have a basic level competency of understanding their role as a principal? And again, if we if we structure ourselves properly, and I didn't, this is something I didn't talk a lot of last time, is we have, when we hire new teachers, we have a mentorship program. When we have hired new principals, it's not as formal as a mentorship program, but they are mentored by other senior principals in the district and by directors. And so that's where I think the competency piece comes in. So, but vision and drive are two internal pieces that I think people may develop over time, but that's what I'm looking for when I'm hiring somebody. As far as realignment, absolutely. We have realigned principals in our district. And when we talk realignment, I think it's important to get people in the right positions so that A, they will be successful, and B, the organization will be more successful as a result. And, you know, there's, there's times that realignment becomes really, okay, there's a house on fire, people are not happy, learning is not going on internal to the building, where I've had to sit down with the principal mid-year and move that person to another position in the district. But I think it's having that honest conversation with them. And if they're struggling, and the building is struggling with the relationship, nobody's happy. And so how do you go about doing that in a human manner so that, you know, that you're benefiting the employees of the building and just as importantly, the students of the building? So I've had to do that mid-year once in my career, and then there have been a number of other times, I would say probably three or four other times in my tenure where we've taken a look at someone maybe in one building, and they may be in a better fit someplace else. And again, it's having the honest conversation about skill set, relationships in the building and where they're at. And, you know, but at the end of the day, when I talk about expecting the best, you want to do what's best for kids. And that's what we do.
Great, thank you. Our district is becoming increasingly diverse in age, religion, education, ethnicity, race, socioeconomics, and political views. What would you do to help unite a district that has such a breadth of views and experiences? Please be specific.
I alluded to this somewhat in my, you know, previous visit with the board. I have had a lot of life experiences dealing with overseas in the Balkans. I was there for seven months in Bosnia in 2003, 2004. I commanded an infantry battalion of about 400 soldiers in Kosovo in 2007, 2008. And we were U.S. soldiers, but we were also integrated into a NATO headquarters where we had soldiers from Poland, Ukraine, France, Great Britain with us. And so talking about, learning about different perspectives and really working together. The other fascinating thing, when I was in Kosovo as a battalion commander, everywhere I went, I drove with two interpreters in the back of my vehicle. One was Serbian, one was Albanian. And these folks, the Serbs and Albanians, the reason we were there is they'd been trying to kill each other for many years, and that's why we were there as peacekeepers. So you learn a lot of listening, and we were the honest brokers. And I think the difference for us was there was faith in the U.S. flag that we wore on our shoulders. I think one of the concerns that I see with us today in America is we have lost trust in the institutions of government. You know, I think COVID has had a big play in it. I think that, you know, I think the divisive election of 2020 really had a significant role in it. And so because there is this lack of trust in America, in our systems today, what we need to do as leaders, and in this case, school leaders, is somehow regain that trust and bring people back together. And I think schools have the ability to do it in a special manner because we're working with kids. All right? You can talk about any side of the aisle you want, but we all want what's best for our kids. Can we disagree, or do we disagree sometimes on what the best thing is? Sure, we can, all right? And we can have civil disagreements about that. But I really think the role of school leaders is to really help the community bridge that gap and listen to different perspectives. You know, I think different folks out there are concerned, all right, about, you know, families. Okay, well, you know, families want to know more about what's going on in school because of what they saw on Zoom classes during the pandemic. All right? Well, when I was growing up as a, as a young educational leader, we always talked about the three-legged stool. All right? It was the teacher, it was the student, it was the family. And suddenly, because the family wants to know more about what's going on or have more direct say in it, that scares people. But I think we should, we need to embrace our families, and we need to have the hard conversations on why people are concerned. But I think that that's, that's a piece of it. The other piece, of course, that is out there right now is the issues around race and ethnicity. And, you know, as I stated last week, we, in my current district, very similar to Stillwater when I took over in 2009, we were 78% white, I think 22% students of color. I think Stillwater's 23% students of color. We are now 42% students of color in Albert Lee. So I think you have to be purposeful about working with your staff on cultural competencies and poverty and all the external factors that impact our students' lives. You know, a lot of folks, this is just fascinating, too. I've been doing a lot of reading. A lot of school districts talk about, you know, we want good things for all, or all students successful. That's a great slogan, that we want all students successful. But I think, and this goes back to something I said last, last week, all is easy, each is hard. We want each student to be successful, and it focuses on the individual student. And I think it's important for us, and incumbent upon us as a district, to really look at each student. And I think that there's a little nuance there between all and each, but all means, okay, it's the system. Each means it's a student. So, you know, the ethnicity piece of that, we touched on a little bit last week as well. One of the things that I think is important is that we learn perspective, and we teach perspective, and we teach our teachers how to teach perspective. And if we're doing it from the auspices of perspective, we're not blaming others. All right? Here's how this person perceives the world. And you can have that discussion on perception as opposed to, here's what these people did and putting a value judgment on what they did or didn't do. So I think part of all of this is really, you know, it's taken me 30 years in the National Guard and 20-some years as an educational leader to figure out, I think, one of the most important things, and I had it in my statement that I provided you yesterday, but one of the most important things that we can do is work on improving the education of our staff and providing them, and providing them more opportunities to be well-developed. I think too often, we think, okay, they've gone to college, we'll dabble in staff development here, and we'll move forward and we'll be better. But I think the more effective, the more we prioritize what we do with our staff, I think the better off we'll be. So that's some of my experiences and thoughts on that.
Thank you. Okay, how do you go about developing a budget? When resources are at a minimum, how do you go about prioritizing funding and, if necessary, cut the budget? Again, be specific, and then explain how you help inform district stakeholders regarding school finances.
So the good news story, first of all, is I've been a superintendent since 2005. I increased our fund balance to barely nothing, to about 33% when I was at Bold. Since I've been at Albert Lee, our fund balance has been between 12 and 14%, and that is with the ups and downs of state funding. The first thing I will tell you about developing a budget, you hire good people and you support them. I've been blessed with having a couple of great finance directors in my, my career at Albert Lee. And so I think that that's important. One of the absolutes you need when developing your budget is it's driven by your, your student numbers, all right? And you have to utilize your student, adjust the daily membership to, to build your budget. And if you are going to be losing students, you have to right-size your budget accordingly. And when you do that, in an era of declining enrollment, you have to make some, some tough recommendations. And what I like to say is this, anytime you are dealing with a budget shortage or shortfall, it's a values decision. It really comes down to what is important to our community and what's important to the board, what do we value as a, as a school system? So the other thing about it is we, and this is just kind of an interesting aside, as part of our audit every single year, they do a comparison of how we are doing in certain budgetary areas to the rest of the state. So we typically, I inherited a, what we call a Cadillac model in special education. So we have what they call a case facilitator. We used to have a case facilitator in every single building, and that person did the special ed paperwork for that building. And the teachers really didn't have to do so much paperwork. Well, we were significantly higher than the rest of the state in that area. So a tough budget adjustment related to that is, folks, overall, our budget looks okay, but we are really out of whack within our funding within this, this area. So it's not just a, we're gonna cut the budget because what you have to do is if you eliminate the facilitators, somebody's still gonna have to do the paperwork. And if you've been a teacher who's been part of a system for a long time, that you're not doing a lot of the paperwork because you have a facilitator, then you are going to have to provide some opportunities for your teachers. So I'm saying this because this is fresh, because we just did this two years ago. And so part of what we've had to do with our staff is, and we started the year trying this, and it didn't work out very well because of COVID, because of all the absences we had, but we would provide one day a month for our special ed teachers to collaborate and learn from each other on the paperwork side of it. Because we were so short for subs, we stopped that probably in December. And now we're providing time after school for folks to do that. So that's an example of impact of a cut on, on the community. An example with regular education, I have been pretty fortunate during my tenure that we've had a slight increase almost every single year until 2020 in Albert Lee. The community was getting smaller, but the school district was still able to add students because we were doing some good things, till 2020 hit and then COVID. And so, you know, a lot of folks just took, took a hit on their budget during COVID. We didn't. We actually adjusted our class size targets. So back to the start of this question, we have class-sized targets at our elementary, we have class-sized targets at our middle and secondary, our high school levels. And, you know, our, I think our kindergarten targets were 22 until this past, they were 18 to 22, and this past year, they went from, to 24. And then I think third grade might be 26, and then fourth and fifth up to 30. So we have to communicate that to the folks, and we have to tell them the why. And I think if you can enunciate the why and explain it to them, they may not like it, but at least you're having the honest conversation with them. Because we, I don't, I don't know if Stillwater does, I should know this, but I haven't, I didn't find it. We have a fund balance policy, and our, our policy says it's 12%. And if we go below 12%, the board has to come and they have to revisit the policy. And so that is our, our target on the wall while we're, you know, we're developing our budget. You know, could it, it used to be 14 at some point, and then the board said, no, that was too much. We now, we're comfortable with 12. And why is that important to us as a school district? And this is kind of an interesting aside, I don't know if any of you know this or not, but the state of Minnesota, who's just oozing money right now, didn't used to be. And so one of the things they would do if there was going to be a budget shortfall from the state of Minnesota, they would say, we're gonna be short a billion dollars. Well, they can't print a billion dollars. So you know what they do? They go to school districts and they say, we're not gonna give you all your money this year, and, but we're gonna give you this little piece of paper. And this little piece of paper is called an aid anticipation certificate. And you can take this paper to the bank, and the bank will then give you money so you can run your school district. Great, who's happy with that? Well, the banker is, because they got guaranteed money coming. School district's not so happy because we have to take out a loan to operate because the state of Minnesota is not funding us like they should. So if you have a fund balance that's healthy, you can dip into that, and you don't have to take out as much in loans. Like, I remember one year early in my career, we had to take out probably, interest was probably $70,000. All right, well, that's a teacher that we no longer could have. So that's kind of the importance of the, the fund balance and the why behind it. The other thing I can tell you is this, and we have not had to do this ever, but I can tell you some stories of districts around us where, we had a district just to our west who came out, they couldn't get a referendum passed, couldn't get it passed, couldn't get it passed, and they finally came out and said, if it doesn't pass, we're cutting all activities. Because that was a value to the community. Well, it passed. I have a district north of us who said, if it doesn't pass, we're cutting the orchestra. It didn't pass, and they didn't cut the orchestra. And so what do you think the perception of the trust and the district administration was? You told us you were gonna do this, you threatened us, and you didn't follow through. So if you are having these hard discussions at the board level, and you're in need of a referendum, I think you have to, you have to be, commit to it and say, yeah, you're gonna do it. But the feedback you get is from your wider community on this. And that's where you're elected the board representatives as far as what we value as a community and what's important to us. And so I don't think you would want to, want to do anything unless you had a real, you know, good feel for, for what the community thinks on things and what's important to them.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, number eight, excuse me. Many students are suffering from stress, mental health, and behavioral issues. These are just a few barriers they face to reaching their full potential. Give us distinct examples of how you would implement a support system for staff, parents, and students to reduce these and other barriers hindering their full academic and social, emotional growth.
You know, a number of years ago, when I came to Albert Lee, we had, I think, a counselor in our middle school, and I think we had two counselors at our high school, and that was it district-wide. And that was okay, but I don't think, it clearly wasn't meaning, and we had social workers as well, but as far as counselors. And as, as I, as our district has evolved over time, our children have been faced with more challenges, our families have been faced with more challenges. And so we were able to, through some different funding programs we went after with the legislature, probably six or seven years ago, we were able to, to get elementary counselors, one in each building. We now have three counselors at the high school. We have a counselor at the ALC full-time now, and then we have, I think, one and a half at, at our middle school. So I think that's the first step is, all right, we need to get folks and make them available to our students. The second step, particularly in the elementary, is we have to provide them a curriculum, the counselors. So, you know, we can teach some social, emotional skills through, through second step. It's a, it's a counseling curriculum program that, that they utilize. COVID came, and here, I'll tell you how we handled the COVID federal dollars. And again, this was more tactical, I think, for the district, but in, in meeting the needs of our students. So a lot of districts said, well, kids have been, had a hard time with COVID, and there's definitely learning loss going on. So we're gonna reduce our class sizes. And that's great, but the problem with that is, you're gonna reduce your class sizes, and then when those federal dollars are gone in three years, you're gonna put your budget off the cliff because you're no longer gonna be able to keep these low class sizes, and then your community is going to, you know, be upset about it. So I said, we're not doing that in Albert Lee. And I presented a plan to the board, which we hired resource specialists, is what we call them, and some more social workers. And our resource specialists, we have one in every building, and what they are, they're either a teacher or a counselor by background, and their role is to work with our kids who are really struggling getting, coming back to school. Regular education students are struggling coming back to the, to the district and their families. And they, they work with staff to find resources, how we can help these kids, how we can support them better, and they also work with the families. And those are finite positions. They will be gone in three years unless more money comes into the district. But it's a, it's a short-term opportunity to meet some of the social, emotional needs of the district without driving, and we're very upfront with them. I mean, yes, you're hired into the district, and guess what? If you do a great job, we'll figure out a way to keep you. It might be in some other capacity. But, but we're not expending resources that, such as class sizes, that are gonna go away and then, and then that, I just think we're better off for it. We're more, more specific with it. The, mental health is not just a student issue, it's a staff issue. We have had, I, we've had more mental health issues with our staff, I think, than I've seen since I've been there. And so I'm gonna tell you a quick story on what we're doing there. Kind of interesting. You're doing something similar, I think, at your high school here with it. So I meet every Thursday morning with our union leadership, our teacher leadership, and we have ongoing discussions on how things are going in the district. And, you know, they came to me, our quarters are aligned, so first quarter's done at MEA, second quarter's done at the holiday break, third quarter's done at our spring break, and then, you know, fourth quarter's done at the end of the year. So we're ending, getting close to the end of first quarter, and staff is burned out. They're subbing for each other, there's, they're just really struggling. So we gave them an extra day at the quarter, okay? They were appreciative of it. I don't think it really helped. I mean, helped a little bit. So then, the, we got closer to the holiday break, and, you know, I think a lot of districts were adding a day or two to the, to the calendar there. And I had the union say, well, can we do something like that? And I said, no, that's not gonna fly. And he just, you know, kind of looked at me, and what do you mean? I said, that's not gonna cut it. Okay. I said, we need to look at a long-term strategy, because this is just a Band-Aid that you're gonna, you're gonna feel good over the holiday break, you're gonna come back, and you're gonna be stressed out again pretty soon. So we went to the community and we surveyed them. And we said, what if we went to one Wednesday a month that was virtual? We're one-to-one, so we can, we can do that. One Wednesday a month as virtual. And if you need daycare for your child, they just get on the bus, or they just walk to school, and our support staff, our EAs and our paraprofessionals will, will provide the, the care for them, and they'll help the kids with their homework. So homework's pushed out on Tuesday. Staff then has the opportunity to collectively plan, our PLCs are on Wednesday mornings, and extend the, extend the day, and just work together collaboratively and breathe. So went to the board with it, we shared the data. We have about, I think, you know, 3,500 in our district, probably 100, 100 kids take advantage of the daycare. And so we just rotate different staff members through that, our, our support staff. And it has been a long-term relief to our teachers who, okay, I can breathe. And so we've done it, you know, six, six months, we said we were gonna do it. So we've done it, we have a plan for the rest of the school year. Of course, now they want to do it permanently, and I said, we're not going there yet. I mean, that's just, that's a, you know, I just, we want to get through this school year, and we want to be in good shape. So I think that that's important. And again, I, the, the key part of that was getting that community feedback and, and on the front end and listening to it, and, okay, they're gonna be all right if we do this. And so board voted 7-0 to do it back in December. And I think that has helped with some of our, our staffing mental health needs, and I also think it has helped with some of our subbing shortages, because staff was just, they were too burned out, and they'd be gone, and then we have more, more subs. So I think that's important. The other thing that I talked a little bit to last, last time was the impact of poverty and adverse childhood experiences on our students. And so, again, what are we doing to teach our staff what it's like to, to grow up and live in poverty? And what does it mean when they have four different adverse childhood experiences, such as, you know, parents getting a divorce, alcoholic in the home, seeing parental abuse going on in the home? How are these impacting our students' learning, and what can we do, and what can we do with our staff to better prepare them to meet the needs of our students?
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, Mike, my question is in two parts.
Okay.
So what trends do you see happening in career, technical, and special education? Describe for us how you, how you stay current on these trends, and specifically, how you would explore what lies ahead in the future for career, technical, and special education programs?
So I'll give you some interesting demographic data of Freeborn County. I think this might be 2010, or it's the same as the 2020 census, but 13% of adults 25 and older in Freeborn County, Minnesota, have a four-year college degree. So in, in at Albert Lee High School, 30% of our 30% of our students enter the workforce directly from high school before, and some may go to college later on, but they will go into the workforce. So, what are we doing as a school system to meet the needs of each student? And that's where we came up with this pathways program a few years ago, where we have, you know, different pathways depending on where you're at, but the question's on career and technical education. So, we have a partnership with Riverland Community College. Riverland is almost across the parking lot from our high school. I mean, there's some trees that block it, but I mean, they are that close to each other. And so, as I stated at the last meeting, we not only have some concurrent enrollment in PSEO programs that we offer our kids through Riverland, but we also have our high school ALC on that campus. And so, I think the biggest trend, I don't know if it's a trend, but I will say this regarding career and technical. The biggest challenge we have is not necessarily with the students, it's with the families. And that is the education of, guess what? Working in a factory is not the same working in a factory it was 30 or 40 years ago, or 20 years ago for that matter. And you have some pretty high-tech jobs that you could be working in a, I don't know what they call it, like Megatronics or something, where you're working with robots to fix robots so they're programmed properly. And by the way, your people who have that certificate are making more than a starting teacher who's got a four-year college degree. So, I think it's important that we educate the families. One of the things we use, and we've really, we're getting better at it every single year, is a program, it's a program called Naviance. And basically, with Naviance, you develop a career or a high school pathway as a student in, we dip into it in eighth grade, but really, you put your high school plan together in ninth grade. And you're not locked into it, but it is a good planning tool, and it can provide you opportunities. And getting the parents engaged in that discussion, I think, on the front end of it, it is a good thing as well. So, the trend is, we need more and more technically-trained folks. The challenge is getting society to go with that. A number of years ago, the Obama administration, and I told this to Governor Walz when he was, when he was Representative Walz, when he came to Albert Lee, a number of years back, the Obama administration talked about college, and we want our students to be college and career-ready. And I told the representative at the time, I said, "Yeah, we want, college and career is good, but how about college or career? You could be either. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to be both. You could be either, and it's okay to be either." And so, that's where it's working with the family on it. The special education component of it, trend I'm seeing in special education, particularly with COVID as a result of it, and what the federal government is doing, is we are seeing an explosion of early childhood special education students. Everybody's qualifying, not everybody, but a lot of folks are qualifying. And that is putting a significant burden on our system, because we don't have enough qualified folks to teach it. So, we're having to get variances for our staff. So, we're seeing a huge increase in our early childhood numbers. The other piece of that, that we have seen over the last, oh, eight, nine years, is a significant uptick in autism. We have ASD students that have been identified. And I mentioned last time that we entered into Special Education Cooperative with Austin, and we're running a school together, Austin and Albert Lee are. And a big part of that school is for the autistic students between the two districts. So, I think that that is a significant increase as well. So, I think that, you know, I think career and tech, I think our high schools have got to adjust to meet the needs of industry, and I think to meet the needs of our students. And there's some creative ways to do that. You know, one of the problems that we're facing in schools right now is a lot of this equipment is very expensive. So, in Albert Lee, we have youth apprenticeship programs, where students come to school for part of the day, and then they're paid apprentices in their businesses. We also have diversified occupations, where basically, kids work in the morning, or in school in the morning, and they go work in the afternoon. It's not as formal of a program, but the teacher still checks in on them. But with the youth apprenticeship in particular, it makes a lot of sense for us to work with the industries to learn the equipment on-site that the industry is actually using, rather than us buying it and being obsolete in a few years. And then their kid, our students are learning, cutting-edge right there. So, that is a trend that we are doing as a school district with our industry partners, saving us money and really providing better education for the students. But I think you're gonna see more and more partnerships. We have probably 250 local businesses come into our school every year to talk to, this pre-COVID, to talk to our students in eighth grade about various opportunities in the world. And it's not just tech yet, it's more careers in general. So, I think that is a significant focus, especially when so many of our students are entering the workforce. And I think the federal government's gotta reexamine the whole special education situation. And I think, I'll talk this briefly, too. Probably six weeks ago, I testified at the House Education Finance Subcommittee, our committee on the Special Education Cross-Subsidy. It looked, I think, you're somewhere around $9 million in Stillwater. That is a significant issue. Because what, basically, what you're doing is, we are required to meet the needs of our special education students. Well, the federal government is not funding us as they're supposed to. So, we take $9 million out of the general education budget to meet the needs of our students, which is great. But they're not funding the money that they're supposed to. So, in essence, all the taxpayers then are hit with a higher referendum, because the district doesn't have this money to utilize. So, I testified on that six weeks ago. And basically, you know, they have this huge surplus. So, one idea is to get rid of the cross-subsidy. And if they did that, that would be a huge cash in Florida districts, and they wouldn't have to necessarily have as high referendums. And they could, it would just be significant relief. And it's a creative way to do it. I don't think it's gonna happen, there'll be some relief, I think, but I don't think they're gonna do the full cross-subsidy.
Thank you.
There's 15 minutes left, just to let you know.
Okay.
Describe your experience in working with employee unions and collective bargaining, including the negotiations process. Please be as specific as possible.
So, a couple thoughts there. When I was a first, a small superintendent of a small district, it was really me, finance director, and a board member, who really were the team. Transitioned to Albert Lee, a larger district, they did something kind of unique. And I kind of shifted them away from that quickly. So, when I got there, they had six board members at the time. And Board Member A did teachers, Board Member B did paras, Board Member C did secretaries, Board Member D did custodians, et cetera. Well, the problem with that is, how trained up are our board members, A, B, C, and D, on the different processes? And are we being consistent in our approach? So, first year in Albert Lee, we really were struggling, because it was kind of more of a management board model. And I inserted myself into the process, and we got it done. And at that time, I'd hired a brand-new finance director from Austin. And she'd been an experienced lady, and we were able to go to the board chair and say, "We've got a better model that we want you to utilize." And the model basically is, and it's evolved a little bit over time, but the model is this. We have a finance director, we have our HR director, and we have a board member. And those three sit on the committee. And the board member doesn't sit on all of them, but for bigger groups, they do. And it's a consistent approach from year to year. They know what's going on with it. And it is, one of the things that's really important in negotiations is developing trust. And so, if you negotiate over the years with each other, you develop trust within the system. And so, I'm very proud of what we've got going in Albert Lee in that regard. We, I can tell you, we have not had a union issue go to any sort of, anything pass the district to any sort of outside mediator, or we've used mediation, excuse me. Any grievance has gone to an arbitrator or anything like that. Because we meet with folks, I meet with the teachers weekly, we meet with some of our other units more infrequently. But it's relationships, and it's common sense, and it's working through things so that they don't, they don't become bigger issues than they need to be. You know, today, so, we are in negotiations right, so here's what we did this year with our negotiations. We had an operating referendum, we had to get passed in November. So, we told everybody, "We are not, we're not passing, we're not doing any negotiating until the referendum's passed." Passed, we're now, we're negotiating. So, we're behind the curve a little bit. And this is the longest with our teachers that we've ever been, as far as. I actually went to the meeting this morning, I, first time in probably three years I've met with the teachers, and I met with them this morning. And it was like, "Folks, it's April, and we're not settled yet." And the lead negotiator from the teachers said, "I'm not worried about it, we started late, it's okay." So, it was good we were able to have that conversation. And, but again, I think it's just developing trust over time, and having good parameters, and here's our process, essentially. So, we meet with the units, and then, once a month, might be once every other month, when we're in negotiations season, we have a closed session with the board. And we sit down, and we discuss the issues and the parameters, and we get guidance from the board on. And we tell the board, basically, "Here's what our budget is, here's what we're thinking, what are your thoughts on it?" And, but, and they go back, teachers go back to their executive council, similar situation. So, I am very comfortable with the whole process. I don't dive into it very rarely ever, because we have a team that we've set up for that. And I think the more we support the team, the better off we'll be. As far as other stuff with the unions, we have an insurance committee that's made up of all of our bargaining units. We have an investment committee that's made up of all of our bargaining units. And, you know, those meet infrequently, at least annually. But again, it's relationships, I meet with our custodians sometimes to just do a check-in. So, that's at that level. Real quick, because I know we're running on time here. I mean, with, pre-COVID, I met with, we have PLCs that meet every Wednesday morning. I would meet with a group of teachers every Wednesday morning, and just sit down and have a conversation. It wasn't about professional learning communities, it was an opportunity for me to hear what's going on in the district. My district office would hate that, because I'd come back from those meetings and say, "Why are we doing this, this, and this?", and then they'd have to research why we're doing whatever we're doing. So, but that was very valuable. And again, they get to see you as a person, and I think that's really important, as superintendent, to be seen that way.
Thank you.
You bet.
I'm gonna handle the next, the last three questions here.
Oh.
If your closest colleague and your harshest critic were asked to share their perspectives of you, what would we hear from each?
Well, I can't use four-letter words here, right? So, okay, my closest colleague and your harshest critic. I think my closest colleague was, would say, they'd say a few things. Puts the needs of kids first. He's decisive, and he supports his people. Harshest critic? Yeah, that's an interesting question, because I will tell you this. Because I think there's some critics out there who have no idea who I am, who make some harsh statements about me, and have never met me. So, that is, that's inaccurate. So, but I would say, I think it's double-edged. I think decisive, and they don't like some of the decisions I make. And, and I think with that, well, you didn't hear my perspective, perhaps, on it. And I think if I were to be, if I were to ask myself, I think the one area that I'd like to work on more is listening. Because I am pretty decisive, and I am really pretty quick to analyze something. But being quick doesn't necessarily always, is not always right. And so, I think reflective on it is, I can always improve my listening.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, and then, we had a scenario.
Oh, a scenario here.
Yes. We had the scenario question, you already submitted it in writing. I'm just gonna read it for the benefit of the public, and then if you want to add anything to it or share anything, you can feel free to do so. As Stillwater Area Public Schools approaches the time to refresh our strategic plan, please describe your specific ideas for crafting our district's vision for the next 10 years. Describe how you might build upon and incorporate our portrait of a graduate into Stillwater's next strategic planning process. So, we all received it, and we appreciate it, and we read it. There's five minutes left, so.
Okay. I think that the real important thing, and I've learned this over time, and especially, you know, when we're talking 10 years. Well, I've been, I go back 10 years to when I started my current system. And boy, its system looks a lot now, different today than it did 10 years ago. So, I think it's real important, as far as the strategic plan. Keep it focused, keep it simple, but allow for agility. Because guess what, folks, society's gonna change. And so, we have to be able to adapt the plan. And you can revisit the plan annually, but, I mean, look, look at the devices our kids have now that they didn't have, you know, even probably five years ago in a lot of places. So, I think that that's important. But I think the thing that I really wanna emphasize, and I mentioned it a few minutes ago, is the importance, there's two pieces. One is the importance of the community input. I think if your plan is gonna be valid, you gotta have the stakeholders providing the input to it. And the other piece of it is educating our staff. The education of our staff does not end when they graduate college. I think we really need to put that at the forefront of what we're doing. Because, again, we educate our staff to meet the needs of our students. And that's what we're about at the end of the day. So, that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
The last question, same as before, do you have any questions for us?
Just, you know, having a great, great opportunity to tour the district today, so thanks for that. That was really, I mean, you learn a lot, just demographically, I mean, you just learn a lot about the district, the age of the buildings, et cetera. The building in Lake Elmo reminded me, my elementary school, I was superintendent in Bold, they're built about the same era. So, but that was fun. So, you know, one of the, and I'll just ask this, and everybody can answer, this is really the only question I've got, is where, I can definitely see some needs coming down the pike from a building perspective. What's the sense of urgency with the board on that, as far as, you know, bond for that? And where's that at? Just general thoughts on that. Just general thoughts on that.
Did you want to go ahead? You can start, sure. So across the board and across the community, Lake Elmo School is number one priority. However, we have just, you know, passed the operating referendum and we have now inflation. So the, I think the work to be done is to get the community on board to be able to pass a building referendum for that facility. And so I think that would be the challenge that you would face.
I would agree entirely with that. I would also say just relooking at our demographics and our population in every building and what can be adjusted with boundary changes, what has to make sense being adjusted with space, addition of space or remodeling of space or reconfiguring things is probably a secondary option. And we haven't, as a board, discussed timing on any kind of bond. But especially with the needs at Lake Elmo, it's soon, I would say, is probably something that.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, yes.
First and foremost, thank you for being here. And secondly, thank you for noticing the buildings as well. We, as a district, somebody did say here, we're very proud but also very humble people. And we want all of our kids to be in a space where they can not only learn, be able to participate in spaces that actually influences their development and their learning, including our teachers, our staff. And you will see that Lake Elmo is, I mean, for you to come in and even notice it, for me, it's a bit of an embarrassment, but we know that the community is aware.
Sure.
We're all aware. And so, and as part of the district, as part of a school where we have some of our elementary and, you know, preschool learners, it's an important part of their development. And it's a space that is extremely important for us. Lake Elmo, it's a start, but we know that we still have responsibilities in a lot of our other schools as well. But a sense of urgency in terms of Lake Elmo is one that is at the topmost of all of our list. So I'm glad that you picked on that.
You know, one of the concerns, not in our district, but to a district close to us, is referendum fatigue. You know, and that's something you want to really take a look at too. If, you know, do we want to, you got to time those things out and, because that could be detrimental to the district if that occurs.
I agree.
Well, thank you. I mean, if you, I don't know how much time, we're out.
Right.
All right.
Well, here I got, so I was selected as superintendent of the year for Minnesota. And as part of the whole, I was nominated by people in my school district. And so as part of the process, I have to submit letters of support to the committee. So you guys can talk to people if you want and can, you know, the hall or whatever. But I think the written word is probably, I guess, good and not better than anything as far as what people think. So these are from our teacher leaders, the different people who work on the principal, directors, et cetera, some people in the committee. So I know you're here to tell them something, you know, you have trouble sleeping.
Thank you, Mike. It was a pleasure to listen to you. Thank you. Thank you so much. And it was a pleasure having you back.
Thank you very much. Katie?
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you.
Miss Ture again?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Nice to meet you.
There you go, buddy.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Katie?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay. I'll just take focus.
Oh, I didn't just do my score.